Don't have no more water to lose.
Yeah. Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll start. I'll start by reading the disclaimer. Any invocation that may be offered before the official start of the county council meeting shall be the voluntary offering of a private citizen to and for the benefit of the county council. The views or beliefs expressed by the invocation speaker have not been previously reviewed or approved by the county council and do not necessarily represent the religious beliefs or views of the county council in part or as a whole. No member of the community is required to attend or participate in the invocation, and such decision will have no impact on their right to actively participate in the business of the county council. That being said, I turn it to Mel Gibson, and then for which we'll please stay standing for the upgrade of the pledge allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Father and our God, I thank you for the community of Connersville. Even though we are living in hard economic times, I thank you for the progress that has been made. I thank you for these leaders and their willingness to serve us. I pray that you will grant them your wisdom, your understanding, as they make decisions that will affect our future. We pray especially for our new mayor, Harold Gordon, that he will enjoy your blessings while he is in office. Lord, we believe that as we seek your face, that as we stick together as citizens, that our best days are still to come for this town. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That will call this session to county council's order. Start off with, I'd like to remind everybody that is here and in the audience to please silence their cell phones, see if there's a little vibrate, or turn them off completely. Also, I'd like to, on behalf of the council, extend our condolences to Councilman Seidel and his family, for the loss of his wife, and all of a sudden, our hearts are with him, and he's in our thoughts and prayers, and I wish him the best and his family the best. Has everybody had an opportunity to approve the minutes from February 2nd's regular meeting? Or to review them? Is there any additions or corrections that need to be made to them? If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from February 2nd meeting. So move second by.
Second.
Do a motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for February 2nd, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ayes, ayes, ayes. Motion carries. There aren't no appointments, they're just kind of a hangover. Is there any mail that needs to be shared with the council? We have Mr. Baker sitting with us tonight to represent the attorney. We appreciate him being in here and filling in for Mr. Appel, who did a good job for us while he was here. Mr. Baker, do you have anything for us?
No, I do not, except that we will have a new associate next month. I'm sorry, in May. And hopefully, he will be able to talk to the commission and the folks about setting this chair.
Okay. We'll look forward to that. Is there any committee reports from the wage and committee, the wage plans?
No, Mike, as you know, as you and Mark know, we haven't had a meeting since...
I know, I was talking to Shirley.
Oh. Well, I'll finish anyhow. But with the distractions I've had the last 30 days, and I haven't had a chance to get everything together that we need to have a meeting. I'll explain that to you later.
Okay.
Bear with me.
That's fine. Shirley, have you guys met at all?
We have not met as a committee, but as a continuation from the report last month. I have given a copy of a letter to all Fayette County employees, from the Fayette County commissioners and council, and the subject being the wellness and safety employee meetings. And not that you need to read it now, but just wanted to have you see it. This, as we talked about last month, is the result of recommendations back several years ago, when the liability, the county's liability insurance and the health insurance were both seeing huge increases every year, and it felt like the county just could not deal with them. So, one of the recommendations that perked up my ears back then was that we have a regular safety and wellness meeting for the employees in the county, and giving them an opportunity to let us hear about their concerns for any kind of safety issues that we can talk about. And also, we can communicate with each of the county employees on a quarterly basis, a standard format, and the exact agenda hasn't been created yet, but bottom line, number one, and most important, safety in the workplace, nutrition, physical activity, condition care program, this is through Anthem, to help manage certain health conditions that county employees have, healthy lifestyles online program, food safety, food security, and food resource management. So, this has kind of been the outcome of two meetings specifically by a group that has come together to form the steering committee for the wellness committee. And the idea being that there will be, again, a fixed agenda, where we will go over concerns by the county, by the insurance Anthem representative, also from the health department, and again, the opportunity to use these online programs and educational material that's provided by Anthem and other online insurers. We're hoping to take advantage of some grant monies that might be available to help move us from 91st in the state as far as county wellness, that's where Fayette County resides, 91st out of 92nd, and also to positively affect the health of every one of our employees and our families. There's, we're fortunate to have Becky Marvel, who's just been hired to start the year as a wellness coordinator for Fayette County, I think also for the union. But she's using the resources of Purdue University, the extension office, to help us get this program started. We're operating on a shoestring, so there's really, we don't expect any cost, except getting the employees to attend and hopefully learn how we can all work on wellness for the county. So, what I'm asking for is the council's blessing of this letter. I met two weeks ago with the commissioners, myself and Karen Lippincott, who is our agent for Anthem, who does the shield. And they approved the continuation of this program and getting it started, so we're ready to kick off with our first meeting on March 18th. The idea being that each employee that works in the courthouse will attend one of several meetings, I'm not sure how large each meeting will be, and that the highway department, the 911, community corrections, and the sheriff's department, they will send a representative, and then they will take that packet of information and educational material back to their group and hold the same meeting with their employees. So, we don't intend to bring all of those people here to the courthouse, but instead to send our manager to the different departments, so that they will in essence have their own onsite wellness meeting.
Okay. You were starting to say something like you were seeking approval from the council for something, the continuation?
Well, we made this from the Fayette County commissioners and council, and I would really like, you know, the blessing of everyone on the county, to make them aware that, like I said, this is an outcome from the meetings held with the insurer and their, the people that they came in to help us learn how to hold down the cost. The cost of the liability insurance, the same thing, the cost from our health insurance. And, you know, just one of the best ways we can do that is to have fewer claims with fewer health claims, and fewer issues that might be brought about by, you know, just something, some safety issue that we weren't aware of, that we can get corrected. But, so I guess I would, I would appreciate a vote of support from the council as we start this, this program.
Would somebody like to make a motion at that, or? Which one is?
I just, I don't see what makes it our approval. I think you have to good things, you just go and do it.
Yeah. I agree. I think it's something you should continue to do.
Yeah, sure. That's what I'm calling it.
How's the rest of the council feeling? Dale, Jim?
I'd say it's a, for sure it's a go. I think technically it belongs with the commissioners to institute this policy.
I agree.
I don't think there's anyone here on the council that would have any reason to object, because it certainly will impact our insurance rates.
I agree.
Mark, you okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so you've got 100% backing you. So, continue with the good work, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dale, did you want to say anything else? You said you were going to talk later, or did you want to, is there another time where you're talking to about another meeting?
No, I don't want to talk about the grade all here.
Oh, okay. All right. We have the old business, so with that, under court, you have the commissioner represented. I figured that I'd just save it for you with the highway department, which is next up. You're up. Good to be coming there, Commissioner Jackson.
Good evening. I gave you a packet of information in your spots earlier this afternoon. The grade all at the highway department is decrepit, and in my opinion, please understand I cannot reply, is probably close to a job all. So, having said that, we reached out to the grade all company, Southeastern Equipment, and their representative, Mr. John Miller, and grade, I keep, and grade all's actual representative, John Logan, came on the, I forgot what day I put in the letter, and did a demonstration of a demonstrator of a model they have, so 2014. It only has 28 actual hours on it. Our current grade all, according to Richard, has more than 10,000 hours on it. A new grade all would be in the area of 330,000, if you were taking, depending on what equipment and bells and whistles you get on it. My contention that I put in the letter is simply this: If this grade all goes belly up on us in the middle of a financial year without us having planned for a new one, it's much more difficult to get the money, not to mention the fact that this has been in the shop again recently. It's starting to have problems, and you're welcome to ask Richard what those problems are. So, with the information I gave you, we're getting an almost new grade all at probably close to, and I'm rounding my figures out, $50,000 less than what you could get a new one for. This particular machine, and I went to the demonstration, I was rather impressed, county highway employees were there, especially Morris Dully, who, he worked on those, if I'm correct, Richard. So, if there were any work to be done, he's the one that knows it, and he looked it over from top to bottom, et cetera. I understand the money's tight, but the grade all is a piece of equipment they use on a regular basis. I'm trying to be proactive here. Our last payment on our trucks, which has been made yearly at around 145,000, one payment at the same time each year, our last payment is this year. So, trucks will be paid off. Using my app on my phone, again, I'm rounding out figures, okay? I reached out to the local banks, and I got the best interest rate, and let me couch that to the side for just a second. At the best interest rate that was given me a week or so ago, at 2.57, I figure that financing this 100% will be around 60,000 a year. So, that's roughly 85,000, less than what we're spending, have been spending the last four years, and will spend this year on the truck payments. Now, having said that, I talked to the bank representative this afternoon, and as you know, interest rates fluctuate. When the figure was quoted to me, she wasn't aware, she didn't ask, and I didn't say, didn't think to tell her, we're talking about 100% financing. So, that rate will go up some. Actually, the interest rate today, last week, the one I told you about was 2.57, the actual interest rate today on the market was 2.19, I think, or something to that effect. Now, the finance company that Mr. Miller's company uses has a, what they call a purchase in arrears. You'll have a higher interest rate than probably what you can get here, probably close to anywhere from 2.8 to 3%. And that's because that allows for a delayed initial payment. And they're taking a risk, so they're going to make some money on that by the higher interest rate. But it does allow, it does allow the county a little bit of breathing room, and what I'm, because what I'm thinking is that we should put this into next year's budget, which means the initial payment wouldn't be made till next year. Now, we may be able to make those kind of arrangements with one of the local banks, I don't know. Because I can't, I'm not going to go into negotiations if I don't get a commitment from the council that they are going to purchase this machine. Now, Mr. Miller's here tonight. He's the representative for Southeastern Equipment. And we have first right of refusal, but that only extends to tonight. This is not backing you against the wall to make a decision. With a piece of equipment like that, at that price, there are other interested parties, and they're in the business to make money, so they're not going to wait, okay? So, I've given you all the information. Anything additional that I can answer, or that Richard or Mr. Miller can answer, we're here.
Richard's going to stay out of it, ain't he?
Yeah. I think that's his preference, yes.
Since this has an extended warranty, how long is that warranty for?
Two years, 3,000 hours.
Two years, 3,000?
Standard warranty is actually one year, 1,500 hours. But we're going to put the extra one-year full machine, factory-grade all warranty of an additional one year, 1,500 hours. So, then over a two-year period, you would have two full years, 1,500, or 3,000 hours.
Okay, now, this machine does not have a thumb on it? Or does it? Does it or does not?
You can get a thumb for it.
Okay, how much does that cost?
All together on the pricing, the, if I separate thumb and the limb shear together with some additional 22,000, if I remember correctly. That's correct. The actual limb shear is $12,960, and the fixed thumb grapple is $9,035.
Okay.
And you don't have to buy them as a package. You could buy one, you could buy them both, or you could buy none.
How big of a limb can that shear?
About six to eight inches. It works off the bucket cylinder itself. So, hydraulics are not actually needed to make that limb shear, and it's so nice in that it cuts it so nice and straight, that the material from the bush or tree just falls to the ground. When we get involved with a rotary mower on a boom arm, it's just flying everywhere, and it allows the appearance of the undercut quite jagged and really unappealing compared to the limb shear, which is just like a pair of scissors.
Right. Can the shear, can you shear the limb and hold the limb at the same time, or?
You can, yes. You have to pinch it, so it's the, almost like a tweezer. But a lot of them let it drop, and then they come through and pick them up. But you can pinch it, yes.
Richard, how many hours a year do you put on that grade all, normally?
Normally? I couldn't tell you, it just varies.
Jay, you would have a rough idea, wouldn't you, maybe?
It used to get used a lot.
Yeah.
But as it got older, you couldn't depend on it to start every time you shut it off, or when you turned it and parked it a certain way, it would not start. You'd have to, if you can, after, it just stayed mostly for emergencies, whatever the ditch needs to be done, and they could keep working constantly, not to go out and do it. But as far as using it a lot, you couldn't depend on it to use it a lot, because it constantly now, has been done a lot of work with that thing the last, oh, I don't know, we would do a work off when ours was down there, it was in bad shape.
What all, besides, like you were talking, limb shearing, moving limbs out of the way, and ditching, what all else do you use that for?
Oh, it's used for everything. We used to use the old one for cleaning a headache boll, that's hard on machines. That's hard on the cylinders and everything else, and all the angling on it. But we could use it, look at everything, ditching, emergencies when trees are down, it goes out, and they fix the old trees up out, and they put a whole tree out the road and move it out.
That's our big thing, is emergencies.
And it gets there quicker, because you could run, I think, top speed on 55?
Well, the new one that we're talking about, I'm going to quarter range of 55 to 60 miles an hour.
That's plenty good on county roads.
Mark, can I raise my hand?
Yes. When we had some grapple on it, we used a grade all, a great deal, for clearing debris from some of the bridges that we could reach down into the overside, and it's very valuable for that aspect as well.
Now, it comes with one bucket, is that correct? What size is that bucket?
It's a 60-inch bucket with a bullon cutting edge.
Okay.
It's a ditch bucket with a smooth edge, does not have the excavating teeth attached.
Okay. Now, can we, do you know, Frank, if for some reason at the end of one of the year we had some extra money left over, can we pay an additional payment? Can we pay it off ahead of time?
That's, that's to be negotiated yet, Mark. I don't know. Only thing I've done is touch base with the companies. I explained to them that this had to be presented tonight, I had to get a commitment.
Yeah.
And as I said, the interest rates may vary, and will, I'll do the best I can with the best interest rates. But I did ask that question to the bank representative, called me this afternoon, and she wasn't quite sure. So, again, it's to be determined. I can't tell you. Sure.
And maybe you said this, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. It's our intent to take, if this is approved, take delivery of the grade all, we use grade all this year, and start pay, make the first payment in 2017.
That, again, that depends on which finance company we go with. We go with the finance company associated with Southeastern, okay? They have it called payment in arrears, which basically, it's a delayed initial payment, and the idea is that we would make our initial payment next year, when the monies are budgeted, as opposed to having to make it this year. And yes, delivery, that's what we're working for, is delivery this year as soon as practicable. But I think you can understand, I can't, I can't pin that stuff down without even knowing that we're going to make this step.
Right. But that is our intent.
That's our intent. If, if we're going to give ourselves breathing room, and the local banks do not, will not go along with their version of payment in arrears, then our option is to go with the finance company that does have payments that are payment in arrears, which will keep our, make our first initial, or our initial payment in next year's budget. I prefer to stay local, but if we don't have that option, we still have not yet made, it's not due yet, our last payment on the trucks. I filled out the claim form yesterday, gave it to Terry, told her to hold it back, because I'm trying to figure out where this all fits in here as far as making truck payments, when our initial payment's going to be done, if we're going to proceed with this, et cetera.
So, this, this rate of 2.7 is with US Bank?
2.57.
2.57.
Now, now, that's changed, as I told you, because she wasn't aware we were financing 100%. I, it's on my phone, I think the new rate she gave me is 2.6 something, marked 2.69, I think, but don't pull me through that.
What is the rate with Southeastern Equipment we go with that? Do you know?
About 2.9.
2.9.
Can I make one correction?
Yes.
That is a new machine. It's not a, it is not a used machine.
Yeah, it's only got 28 hours.
28 hours, definitely.
Are you going to do the old one?
We've got an $8,000 trade-in allowance on it.
Yeah, 8,000. I got one last question. In the past, I guess, the way this thing rotates on the base there, we had problems in the past with that, you had to take it all apart and put a pin in it. Does this work on the same principle as that?
It does have a swing gear in it, but I'm sure that over the last 20 years, there's been all kinds of product development, research, new engineering has been, and we haven't been experiencing any type of difficulty with this one here.
Okay. Now, this, is this, I think you said, Frank, that this machine is a little bit larger than the present one we have? Is that correct?
Am I correct? I'm going to say yes.
Okay. All right. I don't have any more questions.
Well, they were good questions.
The actual, Mark, the specifics are on the last, the specs are on the last piece of paper I gave you, the last three or four pages.
Okay.
Just be, just be 100% accurate. That does say that's for five, the specs, and one that we're talking about is four, if I'm correct.
Model year?
Yeah.
It's a 2015?
No, it's, I'm sorry.
Go on to this, Frank.
Oh, it's a, okay. This is the, yes, this is the XL 3100 Series 4 machine. This year, they came out with a Series 5 machine. The basic difference between the Series 4 and the Series 5 is a Tier 3 final engine. This actually has a Detroit Diesel slash Mercedes, six-cylinder, 235-horsepower diesel turbocharged engine in it. The Series 5, which is a Tier Final engine, this is a Tier 4 interim in 2014, because the government wasn't requiring that the emission controls and the emissions associated to the engine didn't need to actually take effect until 2016. So, a big price increase is going to the Volvo engine, which is now in the Series 5, instead of the Mercedes or the Detroit Diesel Series Interim 4. So, with 2014, I, you know, you want the emissions control and pay $30,000 more for the Volvo engine. That's where a big, large bulk of that $50,000 to $55,000 comes in alone, is in going to the Tier 4 Final or the Tier 4 Interim, which this is. Yes, sir.
I've got a question. Is this supposed to use the same kind of fuel that we use in our trucks, or can you use a farm-type diesel to be legal with it?
You asked, that's one of them, Mark. I can't tell you. I'm going to say, I'm going to say you can use it off-road.
That'd be a lot of savings right there.
Now, you do have to put the fluid in, what we call the def-fluid. There's a little tang for the emissions part of it, but I think you can use it off-road.
The grade all's not considered a truck, therefore it's not licensed either. So, we can use off-road.
Mark, I know you asked for the comparisons- Mark, I know you asked for other comparisons, and again, I'm not a mechanic, okay?
Right.
But I think this is a unique type of vehicle, so there wasn't really anything else to really compare apples to apples.
Yeah. Okay. Jay, you have something to add?
Well, I've already had several discussions with Commissioner Jackson about this machine. Haven't talked to Richard about it, but I know from years past, we've had nothing but trouble with our old grade-all down there. To the extent when we really needed it, we didn't have it to use. I only wish that we had our final payment on these trucks behind us, but that's going to happen real soon. We are financially sound at the Highway Department. I mean, the Highway Department doesn't operate out of County General funds.
Yep.
We can do this purchase without breaking the bank at the Highway Department. The opportunity is here for you to get a new machine at a $50,000 discount. If we pass this opportunity, it probably won't happen again. So I think that the, this company's representative has worked with Frank and made every effort to accommodate our situation as much as possible. Personally, I know we need this machine. All we have to do is decide whether we want to commit to five payments of approximately $60,000 a year. Luckily, we only owe one more payment on those trucks this year, and they're paid off, so we can catch up. We can catch up on this.
You can save on salt, can't you, Richard?
Yeah.
Didn't you do this year, did you?
Pretty good this year, they were pretty good.
I have one question for Don. I do, do a lot of financing deals with customers I work with. Would it make more sense if the thumb attachment and the shears that Mark was talking about to, if that's something that Richard thought, Commissioner thought was needed, would that make more sense to roll it all into one thing? You could probably give us about another $10,000 saving, couldn't you?
I wish I could, but the answer to that question is no. But yes, if you want to roll those in, we can definitely do that with no question asked.
I mean, three.
I think the intent was to try to keep the dollars down.
But we're talking, you said, how much was it for those shears and the thumb?
About $22,000.
So that's going to add $5,000 to $6,000 more a year. If it works, what it could do.
I'm just saying, get it all done.
Just clean out under the bridge, that's where all the money is right there.
Just saying, get it done now.
Yes.
I'm all for that, but I'm trying to keep the cost as low as I, as I could.
I know, but you, I have a feeling you're going to be coming back to the council at some point and saying, we really could use that shears, we could really use that thumb, whatever it's called.
Yeah, the thumb grapple.
Thumb grapple.
I'll move to approve financing and leave the thumb and the other piece of equipment up to Frank and Richard to, they can throw that in and leave that a year of financing.
I'll second.
Jay, we have a motion to approve the cost as presented, and with the thumb and the shears up to Frank and Richard. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Thank you, folks. I will, I will try to keep you apprised by email periodically, let you know what's going on as far as price and what we've decided to do, et cetera. Okay?
Appreciate the research and the work you've done, good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Don.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for your business, and it's been a pleasure working with Frank and Richard in the last thirty days, so.
That's one of us that can say that.
Well, that's one.
Richard's okay, it's Frank.
I'm thinking it's the other way around.
Richard kind of keeps quiet, don't you, Richard? You gotta kind of stay low, don't you?
Okay, additional appropriations, did you ask them?
Jim has a question. Do you want to ask your question?
What I like to see is you put a preventive maintenance program, you know, for your new piece of equipment that's taken in so often, check it out. What you do with trucks down there, Richard? You got a program for the trucks?
Yeah.
That they come in there so often and?
At least every week now, because everything.
Get oil, grease.
As soon as we got the new trucks, we tried to keep up on them as best we can. So about every week, we go through them.
That's a life of equipment, is keeping them well-maintained.
Keep clean and treat them like they're your own.
That's why I got my wife.
What about his new hat?
He could use a new hat.
Yeah. He's got a grade-all hat waiting for him.
I didn't want to push my luck from there.
When we did the demo, we dispersed some grade-all hats, but when I talked to Richard about his new cat hat, he said, well, I don't want to put the grade-all hat on you, to cause bad luck, so.
Okay, so he does get a new hat?
There's new hats.
Did Frank get a new one?
If Frank wants one, he can definitely have one.
He didn't have a hat big enough for his head.
You don't wear a hat, do you, Frank?
I've never seen you wear a hat like this.
I'm just grateful, I appreciate it, I'm opting in for it.
At this point, you don't care.
That's right.
All right. Additional, is that it for the grade-all?
Yep.
Additional appropriations, County General Commissioners. You should have stood up there.
He need me up there.
This is money the 911 Department agreed to on the inter-contract for IT Department, part-time pay for Michael Wilhelm. Check was written from FON, $102,22, in the amount of $3,065.92, was then received to County General, $1,000. Need two additional into appropriation, $101.92. Basically, we're just accepting the dollar amount. Is that what we're doing?
Who's this?
This is the 911 Department's contribution for IT support to help pay for Mike Wilhelm's salary. This is, backs up the contractual agreement that they made between 911, probation, and community corrections.
We're taking it, just to accept their money for that part of deal.
Exactly.
Who wrote this? Was this Terry's, or was this your, something you did, Jay, Terry? I didn't see a signature there, so I just.
This was something surely that we.
I recall, yes.
We tried to get done last year, and somehow or another, it didn't. So this, this is just a housekeeping item, a little bit late.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving additional appropriation request in the amount of $3,065.92, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, propose nay. Aye, is that what motion carries? The legal department always has these cool words, Rico forfeiture prosecutor.
I'm here asking that you appropriate the money into an account so that it can be taken advantage of. This is the money that we collect from drug dealers, people committing crimes. Part of what I need to appropriate it for is to pay our attorney who collects it for us, otherwise I think Greg Garrison is going to be coming down and making a personal visit. So, good news is, if you want to meet Greg Garrison, then maybe he'll be coming down to collect his money. It's $10,200 and $36. And this, I don't have any, I don't have any plans to spend it now, except to make sure that his part is taken care of. He gets a percentage basis of what we collect, and I need to settle up with him. But beyond that, it's limited only to supporting the law enforcement agency that is responsible for the investigation that got us the money, or the property that was sold for the money. And those are looked at individually.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yes.
The motion to approve, second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Aye, is that what motion carries?
Thank you. And Frank, if it gets too bad in here, I have complaint forms for harassment back in the office, okay?
Meeting's not over yet, we can rescind that vote. Okay, Nancy called me last week, I believe, about the corner, if I remember right, and I told her, since she was just doing a transfer request, that I didn't feel she needed to be here, unless she made somebody in the council aware of it. She's looking to transfer $2,300 to do autopsies. And it's from autopsy panels to pathologists.
I'll make a motion, Mike.
I'll second.
That'll be done.
Okay. The motion to approve and second it, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, nay? Aye, is that what motion carries?
I agree.
The last item in Superior Court. Popper Attorney, $180. That's one of the smallest requests, request I can remember. From Popper Attorney to law books.
These law books, where do they go? Are we, do we keep them here or do they go to the office?
No, they need to stay here.
I imagine $180 is probably on disk.
Yeah.
I think it might be upstaged, too.
Yeah.
Immediately approve the request to transfer $180 from Popper Attorney's to Law Books line item.
That was your motion, I'm sorry. You made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Your motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Aye, is that what motion carries? Mr. Parker, did you have anything for the council?
No.
Is there anything from our patrons? Okay. If not, I'll, once the minutes are signed. Once the minutes are signed, we can have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, or second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned.
No.